From the Rand Corporation and Tom Vener from AIA Europe. They represent the various disciplines of landscape, architecture, security assessment, and architectural professions, and we hope this will be a very engaging discussion about what has happened to our city and the region in terms of physical impacts and its changes because of increased security measures. This commission's been very involved in that, and I think it's a very important topic for all the public and office to reflect on. On Friday, September 16th at 9:00 AM, we welcome Anna Gulliver-Sanchez, the former Planning Director of Miami, to NCPC. She will discuss Miami's adoption of form-based codes and the award-winning Miami 21 Comprehensive Plan, and that will be here again at the commission chambers at nine o'clock on Friday, September 16th. And also, mark your calendars, we also have an event with architect Bing Tom, who was the designer of the arena stage on southwest side of the district, as our speaker series event headliner. This, he'll explore the legacy of mid-century modernism in Washington and how we could preserve the recent past without losing the future. And this will be held in partnership with the Embassy of Canada and will be held at the Canadian Embassy just down the street on Pennsylvania Avenue. And finally, Commissioner Taggioni would like to just inform the commission and talk a little bit about Mayor Gray's new sustainability initiative. So I'll turn over the microphone to her.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to let my fellow commissioners know that the mayor has asked us to launch an initiative called Sustainable DC with the ambition of making the District of Columbia the most sustainable city in the country. And so, we've kicked off in September with what we hope will be a robust series of discussions, from house parties to big lectures, to all kinds of conversations about the ways in which we could have a greener, healthier, more inclusive, more livable District of Columbia. So the website is www.sustainable.dc.gov, and among the things that are on the website right now, it's both a portal for people to provide suggestions, initial suggestions, about the activities the district should undertake, but also there's a discussion guide. So if any of you want to hold a house party to talk about green energy, or transportation, or sustainable food, any or all of those topics, it's kind of a how-to guide about how you would hold that discussion, what makes for a good meeting, and a little bit of structure around which you could submit some ideas to the district. So I hope all of you will find a way to participate, and we look forward to coming back to the commission with some of the ideas that we get from our citizens and businesses in the city. Thank you.
There's one item on your agenda as well. A week or so ago, we sent to you the proposed dates for the 2012 calendar year meetings. They will all be, as usual, the first Thursday of the month. We did include a note in that meeting noting that July, we might want to move the meeting a little bit away from the Fourth of July, so it was proposed that for the July meeting, we hold the meeting on July the 12th. Is that, at this point, seemingly good for most folks? So with that, everything else is usual. July meeting will be, I guess that's the second Thursday probably, in July, and then, of course, we will not meet in August. Everything else is the same. Adopting the calendar is something we must do, so is there a motion to adopt the calendar for 2012 meetings?
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Calendar is adopted.
I want to go back to the Executive Director's report. I noticed that in the map, is there any reference to the bike locations? And is that just going to, is that, is that in the map? I didn't notice it, and I just wondered.
The bike share locations?
Yeah.
I don't believe they're on there. That's something we can look at.
Yeah, I think, I mean, because when you have tourists looking at this, they may want to know where they can get a bike. Okay?
Item four on the agenda is a legislative update. Ms. Skylar?
I will just call your attention to the Executive Director's report, in which there are four items listed, legislative items listed. The first having been previously reported on to the commission.
Thank you. Agenda item number five is the consent calendar. We have three items. Item number five A is the ambulatory care center complex at Joint Base Andrews Naval Air Facility at Washington. Item number five B is the building identification signs at the Federal Triangle. And item number five C is a temporary modular unit for the White House Visitor Center, the Ellipse Visitor Pavilion. Are there any questions or comments on those three items? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yes, sir, just one.
Yes, sir.
Just on the disposition of the existing signs related to the ellipse signage project. We, congratulations, I think that's a wonderful project, standardize and systemize and make them more attractive and functional. What's the disposition of the old and/or existing signs? Taken down, replaced?
The, are you talking about the signs for the GSA project? That's not, that's on Federal Triangle.
The Federal, yeah.
Not the ellipse.
I'm sorry. I missed, I missed.
Most of them are, there's 27 signs, I think, 26 of them are replacements, we're adding one. Most of them are in pretty rough shape. I don't know how we're going to dispose of them, but I'll find out.
Disposition, I guess, is the, is what we were interested in, that they are going to be removed and disposed of, as opposed to?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Got you, okay. Thank you.
They're the, they're fondly known as the pregnant lady signs, rumored to be designed by Vignelli, but not so.
No offense, of course, to the people that find themselves in that situation.
Otherwise known as the ribbon signs, by the more genteel in the audience, but they're, they're not designed by Vignelli. That was a, that's an urban legend, and they, they do date from the 70s. They are some strange aggregate of material. I don't know how we would recycle them, but that's a good question.
Any other questions on any item on the consent calendar? Hearing none, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of adopting consent calendar before you, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's adopted. Agenda item number six A is the building replacement at Dunbar Senior High School, and we have Ms. Hirsch. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Today, I will be presenting a replacement facility for the Dunbar Senior High School in northwest Washington. This has been submitted by the District of Columbia Office of Public Education Facilities Dunbar High School is located off of New Jersey Avenue in the central area, and therefore the commission has approval authority over this project. The site is roughly bounded by First Street on the east, N Street on the south, New Jersey Avenue to the west, and the closest street on the north is P Street. The Armstrong Manual Training School is located to the north of the existing track, and Dunbar Recreation Center is to the south of N Street. The existing facility was built in the 1970s. At the time, it was built, the O Street right-of-way, as well as portions of Third Street right-of-way were closed so that this school could be built. The six-story concrete structure is of a very different mass, scale, and character than the surrounding residential community, which primarily consists of two-story row homes or apartment buildings. Since 1917, there has been a high school on this site. The original building was built, you can see up here in the right-hand corner, was built in the collegiate Gothic style. It, main entrance was off of First Street, and you'll note that O Street and Third Street were continuous. This school was organized around a central gathering space or armory. The main circulation space, classrooms, the gym, the pool, were all directly accessible off of that center space. Here we can see again an aerial of the existing site conditions. The current school is over 300,000 square feet, and it's much larger than what is needed for the current student body. In addition, the footprint of the building has disrupted the city's street grid. The proposed school will be reoriented in a similar manner as the 1917 school, with the main entry off of N Street rather than O Street, however. The track and field will shift to the west, towards New Jersey Avenue. In addition, there will be an auxiliary playing field on the north side of O Street. The main advantage to this site plan is the ability to reopen O Street to, through traffic, and also to open the view shed down Third Street. The, I'm sorry. The, in addition to the actual site layout, the floor plan of the school also looks to the original 1917 building, and is organized around a central gathering space or armory. The classrooms would be located in a western wing off of N Street, and an administrative wing on First Street, which would house the auditorium, gym, pool, cafeteria, media center, and library. The other advantage to this floor plan is that it would allow for the surrounding community to have access to some of the school's amenities, such as the theater or gym, when the school is not in session at night or on the weekends. Here we can see the proposed building. This would be the N Street facade. This is the four-story classroom wing laboratory space. The entry plaza will be framed by this tower, with the armory directly behind it, and then the administrative wing, which would hold the offices, as well as the cafeteria and auditorium. The track will be constructed on access with the new gymnasium, and also have access off of N and O Streets, thereby enabling the community to also have access to the playing fields when the school is not in session. The main focus of the project for all agencies involved, including the district's Office of Planning, the district's Department of Transportation, the state Historic Preservation Officer, as well as NCPC, was the opening of O Street. It's all recognized that this project presented an opportunity to restore the city's street grid. And as part of the current project, the eastern section of the street, closest to First Street, will be constructed.
Sorry, I lost my orientation. Where's north?
Sorry.
North is up, okay.
This is up. North, sorry.
Oh, I see.
In this past May, the commission provided comments on the concept design for the school. At that time, the applicant was proposing to visually reopen O Street and use the space for parking, rather than making it a functional street. The commission provided comments, and one of those comments was to continue to work with the district's Office of Planning and other interested parties on perhaps the design of O Street and it becoming a functional vehicular street. Since May, through a series of meetings, as well as the Section 106 consultation process with the SHIPO, all parties have agreed and committed to opening the street. At this point, it's a matter of identifying the financing, and DDOT is working to do that. But all parties recognize the importance of reconnecting the street grid, improving the circulation in the area, and also, this will allow the school to be more integrated into the community, the surrounding community. So with that, the Executive Director's recommendation is to approve the preliminary and final site and building plans for Dunbar Senior High School, and notes that with the construction of the new school, a portion of O Street will be reopened, and also notes that the SHIPO has asked that if funding is not identified within a year of the commission's approval, that all relevant parties reconsult to identify possible solutions.
So I move the Executive Director's recommendation. Wait, and then the, I would like to comment, make some discussion, ask some discussion.
Sure.
When it's before us.
Yeah, it's been moved. Is there a second before we get to discussion? It's been moved and seconded, it's on the floor for discussion. Mr. Dimas?
Just a couple of questions, just out of curiosity. What is the capacity of Dunbar, and what is the school population now?
The new school will be approximately 265,000 square feet and will accommodate 1,100 students. The existing school is over 300,000 square feet. I do, I don't know the current existing student body, though.
What is the capacity of Dunbar now?
Of now? It's over 2,000 students.
So the number of students has shrunk to the point where it's being downsized to 1917? Did I understand that correct?
Well, the new design is just referring back to the school that was designed in 1917. It's not necessarily the same capacity that was of the school that was there in 1917.
And where will the kids be going to school when the construction occurs?
So, the project will be constructed in phases. The students will stay in the existing building when the new building is constructed, and I believe that what will have to happen is they'll find, so the students will be able to still use this building while the new building is built on this portion of the site, and what will have to happen is, a different facility will have to be identified for the field and athletic activities. While that's being done, after the building, the new building is constructed, this building will come down, and the new track will be constructed.
So there'll be no relocation of the students during the construction phase? Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a couple of questions. First, if the old footprint of the school were in existence now, would O Street be openable?
If the old, you meaning the 1917?
The old, yeah, the original footprint.
Yeah, then the O Street would probably be in its, that, the configuration it was in at the time.
And so, O Street would have been open or closed at that time?
At that time, it was open.
Would be openable, okay, well. I ask because I have, not many, but a few votes that I've taken on account when I was on the council. One was to close and take down the old Dunbar building. I have lived to regret that act, so maybe I'm having another bite at the apple. It's really amazing, you know?
If you live longer.
Really? I saw it come down, and now I see another one being rebuilt. I'm kind of sorry that the Gothic, or the historical architecture wasn't maybe more incorporated. It may save me, make me feel even better. But since the location, et cetera, are integrating the historical building, I'm very pleased. And probably if the facade at least had been maintained, which was an option, but the playing field was something I thought, I felt then it was important for the young people. That building did not. The facade was not kept. So now the tapestry is open for all of this new building and so forth, so maybe there was something, maybe this is good, and I'm pleased to see it going forward. I just hope the funding can be found, and there are a lot of very, very historical people associated with Dunbar who will be a part of this, hopefully be a part of this construction. Maybe they can even find, help us find some money if necessary, and hopefully there'd be a way to commemorate some of them in the construction and the, do they still have the arts percentage of construction that bill was passed back in the 70s to have a percentage of all construction, include artwork of some kind? Or is the funding, maybe it's a problem?
It's still on the books. It's hardly ever been implemented.
Really? Well, another piece I put in that didn't go anywhere, but let's hope that maybe on this one, they can use some of that money or this idea to put some scripts on the wall of people who went there who were very, very important in our community. Thank you, and pleased.
Mr. Hart?
Yes, it's encouraging to see that the design has progressed. The street is now being shown as an open and trafficable street. In the past, I'm assuming that the street right-of-way was vacated for the construction of the school. Will that right-of-way be rededicated as part of this design?
So when the, the street was closed for the construction of the school in the 1970s, that, the, the street was, the title to that land was given to the budding property owner, so it, the, the land is with the District of Columbia.
Let me just clarify that the intention, our intention certainly, is that the, that the roadway be rededicated, and that's why it's DDOT that's looking for additional money to, you know, to fund this, yeah. And I'll just point out, just for, just for the sake of completeness, what's shown as the north field parcel, we're also encouraging DCPS to basically put out for RFP, and put housing or apartment building, and basically try to enliven the street, you know, in all four directions. I mean, part of what we want is more safety and more activity there, and as you know, school is not a, even an 18-hour activity for most of the year, so, you know, that's part of what we hope to do, to make it safer and more convivial for people in the neighborhood.
Further discussion or other questions? Mr. Provence?
There's a reference to the armory, well, with the design convention. Is that how the current building is referred to? Is it labeled? Is, I'm just struggling with the concept of an armory in a school.
Right.
Armory in the conventional sense, as opposed to the design sense?
The original drawings were labeled as a drill hole for the central space. They're pretty difficult to see, but I'm, I think it's being used more conceptually, rather than in the same sense that it would be used as in military.
Was there some military connection, ROTC, junior ROTC program, something like that?
Mr. Chairman?
Was that the background?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I'd like to speak to that, because, yes, there was a strong ROTC program in those days.
Got you.
Theirs, their program was almost as strong as our program at McKinley, but we did beat them in competition. So yes, that's what it does refer to.
Let the record state.
Let the record make it clear.
McKinley did beat Dunbar.
Well, that's what it's about, I think, trying to capture some of that historical presence.
ROTC now?
Well, I don't know. I wish they were there. I wish it was still strong.
Wonderful program.
But, but, I don't know. Is it still going on, Robert? Okay.
I believe there is still an ROTC program now. That's, the applicant is indicating that there is.
There was, talk about reorienting and shifting the entrance, I think, to the N Street side of the building. There was also something in the staff report about the close proximity to both metro as well as bus stations and so forth. Does that shift or extend the entrance to the building, just a matter of a few steps, so it's inconsequential, or is it significant?
It's inconsequential, I mean.
All right. After-hours access for community activities, those are, the current school does not have that type of access, so that's one of the benefits of the new design, that after-hours access would be provided for the first time?
That is correct, yeah. The after-hours access will be arranged with the Department of Park and Rec and the public school system.
Bleachers, looks like the 2,000 bleachers are going to go on the south side of the athletic field with the press box. I can't tell whether, it's a large press box and it separates the two sections. What I'm thinking about is typically, we separate the seating for the home team versus the visiting team because of friction, not, not only among the students on the field, but the parents in the stands, so.
I believe all of the seating is on the south side of the field. There wasn't enough room to the north. I don't know the specifics in terms of how they're dividing home from the away teams.
Isn't it one-sided now?
Sorry?
Is it one-sided now? I thought it was.
It is.
I remember seeing it from the.
Yeah, it looks like it's all one-sided.
Yeah, I think so. I think you're right. It's a common thing in the high schools.
Must be the higher degree of civility we have under, under the current administration allows us to put opposing teams in close proximity. Exterior design, I understand there's no historical facilities in the area. It's homes and residential properties, so, but somebody talked about the preserving in some way the historical exterior of the building, as opposed to, I'm not going to say this is unremarkable, but it's, clearly doesn't have the same character as the historic building, just as an observation. The north partial access, no access is needed for that property. It's not to be used in any way. I think that's on slide maybe nine? Yeah, the north partial field is not going to be actively used at all by the school. You don't need to have any kind of controlled access across?
No, it will be used by the school. I mean, there'll be a crosswalk and for them to cross, get across.
Right, we're trying to get away from too much controlled access to that parcel.
Okay. Also, one of the positive features of the design, I think, is the compliance with the Hyde Act, with the, even, even with the new, the new tower adjacent to the exterior entrance and the armory. I'm wrestling with the O Street. Is the entire rebuilding and reopening of, how much of the, turn the question around, how much within the scope of this project is O Street? Is it going to be a dirt track? Is it going to be paved? Is it at all accessible? What's, what's going to be done now within the scope of this project, and what will be deferred for later work?
So, the area that's in this blue box here will be repaved as part of this project, as the loading dock is right here for the school, and the entry for the garage is right here. So my understanding is that this section of the street will be repaved with the construction of the school, and that DDOT is working to identify funding for this section.
Okay. The reason I'm asking about that is, looking at the austere financial environment we're in, I don't know how this would prioritize among all the other competing requirements. I have some proposed language to amend the, the recommendation, to get a higher level of confidence and assuredly that this future, very important phase. As many as recall in the 60s and 70s, we, the, some of the designs within DC, particularly for schools, were these big mega blocks that cut off streets, and this is a great effort to, to restore that east-west O Street access, but if it never happens, then it.
Well, what I might suggest instead is that all the commissioners make a pledge to buy their gasoline in the District of Columbia, so that we can get that gas tax revenue to provide the local funding. How's that?
That's all the questions.
I want to add, I noticed in some construction of some of the newer schools, trying to make space available for the public. Sometimes the restrooms are cut off from, you know, easy access, so I don't want to micromanage, and it's probably beyond that, but please try to make sure that the public area that's going to be available for meetings, et cetera, for the community, doesn't require people going down a hallway to get to bathrooms that gets them into the school building. Savoy School, we had a problem. Great, great facility, well, meetings, but the problem is, you got to have guards to keep people, because you got to go down the hall into the classroom areas to go to the bathroom. So I'm assuming they're going to think that through. I don't know what happened, I just, that got by us, I think.
Yeah, no, I believe there are restrooms in this area, so that.
You understand what I'm saying, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they got restrooms in the area too, but you got to go past the classes and the whole building becomes opened. The other comment I was going to make, someone, you asked about historical buildings in the area. Top left corner, those structured, those little, I guess they're purple, brick-colored houses. One of them is a house that was a resident of one of our mayors. She spent many, many years during the summer in that house with her family, so I don't think that's historical, but I thought I'd just pass it on. It is historical.
Further discussion, questions? Mr. Milner?
Just along those lines, I would be remiss if I didn't say that this is the mayor's alma mater.
Exactly. That's right.
He's excited about, I think he attended the original school. I think he's excited about it being restored to a more glorified place than it is now. And that's all I wanted to say.
It's already been moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Do you want to pretend about the funding?
Proposed amendment?
Okay.
Something along the lines of this. Should there be a funding issue with reopening O Street, the segment between First and Third? Within one year of the commission's approval of this action, the DC Office of Public Education Facilities Modernization is requested to submit to NCPC proposed solutions for the reopening of said-street segment. Submission deadline would be September 1st, 2012. The rationale is just the language is a little bit loose. It kind of reads, if we ever get around to it, if we can ever raise the money, we would continue, as opposed to a solid commit with, with some firm delivery dates, at least to reconvene and the responsible parties. That's the motivation behind the amendment.
Can you read that again, please?
Should there be a funding issue with reopening O Street Northwest, the segment between First and Third Streets? Within one year of the commission's approval of this action, the DC Office of Public Education Facilities Modernization is required to submit to NCPC proposed solutions for the reopening of the said-street segment. The submission deadline would be September 1st, 2012.
Discussion on the amendment. Mr. Taggioni?
With all respect, this is a district project, district budget. I mean, I very much appreciate the support of the commission in terms of reopening O Street. I know that our interests are very much aligned on that, and I do appreciate it, because it's not always true, even with our fellow agencies and district government, but it was at, it was at our initiative that, that O Street is being reopened. I just, I appreciate the sentiment, I just think it's not appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, I would want to add, unless there was a language that said we would find money to help do this if we had problems.
No, we.
Well, I see, I see.
That's outside of pur.
Yeah, there we are.
Well, undoubtedly, the place where they're looking for money is in the federal highways budget, so I, you know, that's where I would look if I was a DDOT. No? All local?
Federal aid highway.
Oh, okay.
That's why I need your gas tax, Peter.
Okay, thanks. Well, you, you'll get what little I contribute.
If you had a bicycle tax, it might get something.
Yeah.
Those bikes on the map.
I, I would tend to agree. I don't think this is a real great concern, the reopening of the road from, from NCPC's perspective. I think that the district is trying to do the right thing, and I have every confidence that they'll get the street reopened. I think there's enough constituent. I think there's enough constituent drive for this. I think it'll, it'll happen. It may not happen immediately or as beautifully as it might happen, but I think it'll happen without our having to...
As was, require a deadline. As was previous noted under the current administration in the city, there's probably a higher degree of interest and support than it had been historically in the past.
There is a motion, I presume, on the amendment. Is there a second?
Yes, I have a second to it.
On the amendment?
Mr. Provence's amendment. The amendment has been moved. Just to clarify, the amendment has been moved. Is there a second on the amendment? Hearing none, the amendment falls away. We're back to the EDR, which has been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion on the EDR itself? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion is passed. Thank you very much, Ms. Hirsch. And the last item on the agenda is Agenda Item 6B. It's the energy enhancements to Building Number 126 at the Washington Navy Yard, and Mr. Hart is here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The project before you today is a project that was submitted by the Department of the Navy. It's for a, it's actually a photovoltaic system on Building 386, and this is on the Washington Navy Yard. Building 126 is also in the Navy Yard, is a, the main visitor center, and the photovoltaic system will be on 386 and will be used to add, supply energy to Building 126. Before I get into the project itself, I'd like to get into a little of the background. The project is before us today because the previous commission action for a, for the last project at the Washington Navy Yard, which was in June of 2010, the commission action noted that no future submittals at the Washington Navy Yard will be considered until an updated master plan is submitted. Staff, we have been working with the Navy as they have been working on their master plan for the Navy Yard, and there has been great progress. And the Navy is looking to submit the master plan to the commission within, excuse me, by the beginning of, of next year. The project is a minor project on an existing building. There are no employees incorporated in, included in the design, and there's no interior space. In addition, this is a renewable energy source that's being proposed, and for these reasons, the executive director is recommending that the commission approve the project at the Navy Yard. And now I'll get into the actual design. The Washington Navy Yard is located in southeast Washington DC along the Anacostia River. To the north of the Navy Yard is M Street. To the east is 11th Street, and then to the west is the, the yard's development. You'll see Building 386 here in the, in the eastern portion of the site as well as Building 126. There, Building 386 is a seven-level parking garage that exists at the Navy Yard. The photovoltaic system will be placed on the top level of that parking garage. The garage was built in 1987. Building 126 is, again, the main visitor center, and it is just south of that, of the parking garage. That, that building, 126, was built in 1939 originally as a, as a laundry. I've also highlighted this building here, which is actually Building 405, and the reason that I highlighted it was because this was the last project that was, the, the site of the last project at the Navy Yard that the commission took an action on, which again was June of last year. And at that time, the commission stated no further projects until the master plan, an updated master plan is submitted. The project itself, and I should also add that the last master plan approved by the commission at the Navy Yard was in 1990, a little over 20 years ago. The project itself is highlighted in green in the middle of the slide of this image. The photovoltaic system here is 3,000 square feet. It is 48 solar panels, and it will be installed on a metal-framed canopy that will be situated on the down ramp of the parking garage, the top level of the parking garage. The PV system will be connected to the Building 126 via underground utility lines. And I also wanted to just make you aware that a future submission is for wind turbines. The location is being discussed currently, but the wind turbines and the PV system will be providing energy to the Building 126 as part of a larger energy, energy demonstration project for the building. There's some conservation elements as well for the, for Building 126. Excuse me, staff analysis. Staff, as I said earlier, did, has worked with the, the Navy in understanding the master plan update. We've had four meetings since October of last year. We've had three additional meetings on transportation concerns, both at, at the Navy Yard as well as out, looking at naval installations in the region. The update is, the, the master plan itself is more than 50% complete, and it will be submitted in either January, February of 2012. Again, this is a project that does not include any personnel. It is a fairly small project on the, on an existing building, and it is, it is a, it is a project that needs to be, sorry, excuse me, it's a minor project for the, for the site. For historic preservation, this project is on a existing building, again, built in 1987. The Washington Navy Yard does have an historic district, but that district, these two buildings, 386 and 126, are not in that historic district. The DC State Historic Preservation Office has said that this project is not going to be visible. Therefore, it is no adverse effect on historic resources. And finally, it is a renewable energy project, and this aligns well with the Executive Order 13514 as well as the Energy Independence and Security Act. And for these reasons, we see this project as a minor one on the installation, and therefore the executive director recommends that the commission approve the preliminary and final building plans for the installation of a 48-panel photovoltaic system on the top level of Building 386. And note that although a recent commission action for a project at the Navy Yard stated that no future submittals at the Navy Yard will be considered until an updated master plan is submitted, that this proposal is a minor one, that does not increase the population of the installation, does not include any interior space, will have no adverse effect on historic resources, and is comprised of elements that reduce the installation's energy consumption. And with that...
As, as well as no impact on parking ratios.
And I would like to conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Are there questions or discussion on this? Right?
I have a process question for my own edification. Is this just not on the consent calendar because of the commission's previous remarks about a master plan? Is that it? Okay.
Mr. Hart?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my company does a lot of work for the Navy, so in this case, I will recuse myself from this item.
Yes, sir. Further discussion or questions? Mr. Gony?
Notwithstanding, you know, our issue about the master plan, which I know is still live, and I, I hope it has prompted the Navy to, to be working more closely to it. I think it's a great project. I'm delighted to see the Navy doing this. And in fact, I know the Department of Defense in general is looking very hard at all kinds of alternative and renewable energy sources, you know, for their own security and for the safety of their enlisted personnel. I think it's, I think it's great. I can't, and I hope that they would be willing to share the results, that they call this a pilot, a demonstration project. I think the commission would love to hear at some point in the future the results of their demonstration and see if we could learn lessons that could be applied to other federal buildings. Thank you.
On that, you know, a power plant of 500 megawatts powers X thousands of homes, it's kind of a layman's way of describing it, is, they're a layman's way of describing what 28 kilowatts, what kind of impact it has off the top of your head?
I mean, it's, there, well, it needs to be in, look at kilowatts per hour, and I've been actually trying to get some additional information. It doesn't say that in the, in the, the report. It is a 28, it will produce 28 point, I'm sorry, 22.8 kilowatts of power. There is a, you need to look at what the, what that is over, over time, and that information we don't have, but it is, it's just a capacity to be able to, this is how much it can produce at one, at one point.
Sure.
Over time, it'll be a much, you know, larger amount. It's just, it is, they're really looking for this along with the, the wind turbines to actually produce the, the, the energy for the Building 128.
For the building itself?
For the building itself. And they are, they're looking to reduce the amount of, basically do energy conservation in concert with producing, you know, energy so that they can get that, the energy requirements for the, for the building.
Yeah, a little microgrid.
I would just say that the, in the district's program for installing, where they're providing incentives for, for photovoltaics on people's roofs, common systems are three to eight kilowatt hours, and they don't provide enough energy to run the whole household.
Understood.
So it's, this is a pretty small project.
Further questions or comments?
Some comments. I think the Commissioner Tringoni made the comment about what evidence do we have that we have gotten the Navy Yard's attention to upgrade their master plan. I think Mr. Hart covered that. There's been a whole, a series of meetings, both on the master planning side as well as the TMP side, and we now have a firm delivery date of January, February timeframe for the master plan. So I, I take those as all positive signs and evidence that the Navy Yard is getting closer and closer to being in compliance. My question is also about the, what do you get for 28 kilowatts? I think the answer is, I, I know what the Navy thinks, that perhaps someone could address that, what the total usage of Building 126 is that this project is intended to support. And I think that might be a moving target because I, reading the staff report, it looks like this is one of several phases of work. There's previously been work to replace windows and solar tubes and improve the wall insulation so the consumption and the demand in 126 is coming down as the capacity is growing to provide and maybe perhaps make this building self-sustaining. Geothermal is coming, wind turbines are being considered for the final phase. Is the Navy prepared to, to say that 28, at, at the current rate, this will take care of 50% of the power requirements for Building 126 or whatever the right number is?
Mr. Montgomery?
Hello, I'm Kevin Montgomery. I'm representing Naval Facility Engineering Command, Washington, NAFAC, Washington. I'm not an energy expert, and I'll start out by saying that, but it's my understanding the way it's been explained to me that the total energy generated from these projects, it's a three-phase project, will fully allow the visitor center to operate. It'll be totally off the grid. And it is our main visitor center at the Washington Navy Yard. It's, it's a very busy place in the mornings, as you can imagine, and it is open Monday first, it's open weekly for visitors, tourists who also visit the Navy Yard, so.
Great, thank you.
My final comment would be just to commend the Navy on a couple of things. One, on the submission of this energy efficiency project as well as the progress on both the TMP and the master planning efforts. So headed in the right direction, at the right speed.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. It may be not related to this project, but given the new space and the new presence of Navy at Bolden, former Bolden Air Force Base, do we, is there going to be any new plans in the direction, or can you comment on that now?
At this time...
Because you're pretty tight there on Navy, at the Navy Yard now.
At this time, I'm not aware of any upcoming, upcoming energy projects at Joint Base Anacostia Bowling.
Yeah, I ask because it impacts on my, my community, and I wanted to know whether they are looking at doing more.
As we said, as Carlton said earlier, this is a demonstration project. So I think we're really trying to determine how effective something like this can be.
I understand that project, but I'm just broader than that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Is there a motion on the EDR as before you? Mr. Hart, is there a motion on the, oh, you're standing.
It's a motion.
It's been moved and, it's been moved and seconded up.
You're talking, babe.
There is a second, I presume, somewhere.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the project of the EDR, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? It has passed. And with that, is there anything else to come before the commission? Hearing none, that concludes today's commission meeting, which I think is the shortest we've had in quite some time. Great.